...by electronic means in accordance with BVSD policy, BMEA and state law. Laura, can you please call the roll?
Chavez?
Here.
Medler?
Here.
Niznik?
Here.
Quinlan Awedah?
Here.
Raj Paul?
Here.
Sargent?
Here.
Unger? Thank you.
If everybody can turn their attention to the screen, we will observe our land acknowledgement this morning.
The Boulder Valley School District resides and operates on land that is the ancestral homeland and unjustly and illegally taken territory of the Ute, Puebla, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Apache, Navajo, and 48 other tribal nations historically tied to this land who have called this land home since time immemorial. We acknowledge the atrocities committed here, including the painful history of genocide, forced assimilation, and efforts to alienate the indigenous inhabitants from their homeland, supported by the policies of the United States government. BVSD is aware of the many indigenous peoples, past and present, and their dignified nations and cultures who care for this land with strength and resilience. BVSD recognizes the histories of the land in Colorado and the survival of many nations that carried their oral traditions into the present. It is BVSD's responsibility to educate ourselves, our community, and our students so that we can embrace the wisdom and knowledge of indigenous peoples and actively stand together to address injustices. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm and honor the history, wisdom, oral traditions, and resilience of indigenous people, and recognize the responsibility to care for and appreciate this land together.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all to them thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us here. We are glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time is our motion to approve this morning's agenda. Moved by Beth, seconded by Jorge. Laura, can you please call the roll on the agenda?
Chavez?
Yes.
Medler?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Quinlan Awedah?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
And I just noticed Unger has arrived. Unger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Board members, as I'm sure you've seen, today we are taking a very in-depth look at our state assessment results, and we have a new face this morning. So I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Anderson for introductions.
Good morning, Board President Raj Paul, board members. Great to be here with you this morning. Excited to go through an update for All Together for All Students Strategic Plan, where we'll be reviewing our recent performance frameworks, CMAS, PSAT, SAT, strategic plan. We'll go through the UIP a little bit, some KPIs, and then have discussion throughout. With us always is Dr. De La Cruz and Chris, and we also have today our new Executive Director for Accountability Evaluation, Jessica Alzen, and you all know Claire. So we've got the team all here, very excited. There is a lot of slides. No Rock Left, was it? No Rock Left unturned? Unturned? Yeah. We've got a lot of slides. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. De La Cruz.
I'm hearing a very true theme about many slides and a lot of content today. Good morning, President Raj Paul and members of the board. We appreciate this opportunity to spend time with you this morning discussing outcomes, current state, and what's ahead. And as Dr. Anderson said, I'm joined by my outstanding colleagues, the newest of which is Dr. Alzine, who's been with us since July, when she dove right in and got to work with the team, and we're just so glad to have her on the team and here today to share and interpret data. This morning, we'll be discussing a lot, the district performance framework, school performance frameworks, CMAS, PSAT and SAT outcomes, Our All Together for All Students Strategic Plan, and UIP updates, as well as reporting out on key performance indicator dashboards or KPI dashboards. And of course, we've built in opportunities for questions and conversation, and you are all welcome to ask questions throughout, keeping in mind the caveat that we have a lot of content to work through in our time together. As the board knows, we have anchored our district-wide work in this theory of action that if we increase meaningful opportunities and provide equitable access for all students, then we'll accelerate student growth, which will improve achievement and reduce disparities. In other words, opportunity will lead to growth, which will lead to achievement. And this theory of action is proving to be our North Star that's resulting in more students having more success, and we welcome the opportunity to share more about that with you this morning. We know we have a lot of work to do. We know we have improvements yet to make, and we're never satisfied with the status quo, as the board surely knows about us at this point. But we're also really pleased that we're at a point in BVSD where more students in more groups are having more opportunities to grow and achieve. Before we dig into the bulk of the data, we just want to share a few high-level celebrations looking at multi-year trends. So looking all the way back to 2014, we see that BVSD now has the highest percent of students meeting and exceeding standards in English Language Arts and Math for the second year in a row. We also have the highest four-year growth in ELA and Math in six out of 10 content and grade level combinations, fourth through eighth grade growth measures. You know that we're deeply committed to focusing on all student groups, and so we're really pleased to see growth across student groups in ELA, and more students meeting benchmark in Spanish Language Arts than last year. Looking toward our multilingual learners who are also showing progress, looking at the trends since post-pandemic years, since 2122, we see that more multilingual learners are meeting benchmark on CMAS with an increase in math and an increase in reading that you can see on the right side of the slide here. And continuing with marking progress for multilingual learners, the ACCESS Assessment, which is the assessment of comprehension and communication in English for multilingual learners, and is given in the spring, in the January to February window. You can see here two consecutive years of access growth for an 11-point median growth percentile gain over that time. Moving to students with IEPs, more of our students who receive special education services are meeting benchmark in a multi-year trend since the 2122 school year, with an increase in students meeting the math benchmark that you see here from 17.3 to 21.6, and an increase in students meeting the reading benchmark from 25.9 to 31.6. As I mentioned, the team will walk us through the data more specifically, and as I mentioned, we're never satisfied with the status quo, and we know we have work to do, but we wanted just to begin with this overview of some promising outcomes for students. Next up, Chris is going to remind us of the strategic plan and UIP timelines.
Good morning, board members. Thanks for having us. We're excited to celebrate with you today. Just an overview of the schedule that we have to be in front of the board throughout this year. So obviously, today's September 16th, we're going to dive into that CMAS data as well as review some of the 25, 26 strategic focus as a result of our progress being made. We're scheduled to be with you again on December 16th for an update on our strategic plan, April, as we work through the development of the new UIP and DAC recommendations, and then again at the end of the year so that we can give you an update on the final reports of our UIP for this year, as well as what we're going to be bringing forth into the fall semester for next year. This is a reminder slide. This was shared with the board last year as a visual of when data is going to be made available to you, so just wanted to bring that back to the boards for your awareness. Obviously, we're there in September, you're going to see a bunch of different marks checked off where we're going to be able to present CMAS data, access data, CRI plus data, certain things such as out-of-school suspension or sort of interventions. We have that data available at our fingertips. We can bring that to you at any time. And then obviously, there's some things that we will have available towards the end of the year as well in terms of overall PD participation rates and interim assessment data. So to dive deeper into all of that great data, I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Alzine.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you all, and let's just dive in. We have a lot to do. So my role today is to talk about our district performance framework results and then go into the details of our achievement and growth by level, so we'll jump right in. So first off, we have our biggest celebration with BVSD being accredited with distinction for the second year of a row. Not only did we not only did we maintain that, but we increased our score on the district performance framework by 1%. Additionally, we are the only Denver Metro School District accredited with distinction. What you can see here is not only that increase from 24 to 25, but also the red bar helps you make a comparison between ourselves and our neighboring Denver Metro School Districts, just really showing a lot of what we're celebrating here in the district this year.
Just one other point, Dr. Alzine, that this past year, we earned more points, the highest percentage of points on the district performance framework than any district has ever earned in the front range. That is the quality of the work that happened in our schools, and so I just want to, yes, we did better than last year, but no one has done as well as we did this past year in the history of this, so we're really, really excited about that.
So what led to that? We have increases in achievement at elementary, middle, and high school, as well as increases in growth for elementary and middle school. So next, we're going to jump into a lot of slides that look very similarly. So before I really go into the details of that, we're going to start off with just some general orientation. So you're going to see a series of slides that look similar to this one. So as a general idea of what you'll see, along the x-axis on the bottom will be a variety of different student groups. We'll see two sets. We'll see all students, our students eligible for free and reduced-priced lunch, gifted and talented, multilingual learners, and then students with IEPs. On a different set of slides, you'll see the different racial and ethnic groups along the x-axis on the bottom. The y-axis on the left side will either be for achievement, percent meet succeeds, grade level standards, or growth scores. And then the colored bars will consistently be our scores over time with the year key on the right-hand side, and that kind of fuchsia-colored bar being always the most recent year of data. So if we're looking at the details here, what we see is that our elementary English Language Arts achievement is a steady increase over time overall for all of our students, as well as relatively consistent achievement across these different groups with some promising improvement patterns for our students with IEPs. Moving on to growth, again, just a little bit of orientation. Now you see growth on the y-axis over on the left-hand side, and just a quick reminder of median growth percentiles or growth scores. It's a way for us to think about how are our students growing compared to their academic peers in the state? So we kind of think of a benchmark of 50 as an average rate of growth across the state compared to academic peers, and a growth score higher than 50 of faster rate, growth score lower than 50 of a slower rate of growth. So what we're seeing here is that our BVSD elementary students overall, as well as those in each of the student subgroups shown here, increased in their relative growth from last year. In addition, the numbers on top of all of those fuchsia bars are 50 or higher, showing that our students are outpacing their academic peers in the state on average in elementary English Language Arts.
Can you remind us when the new ELA curriculum went into place for the elementary schoolers?
We had two phases of implementation, but as of last year, 100% of elementary schools were utilizing the new ELA materials. For elementary English Language Arts achievement, we're seeing this is mixed by our racial and ethnic groups here. Again, this is the first time we've seen the racial and ethnic groups along the x-axis. So our Latino and Hispanic students, our students who identify as two or more races, and our white students are showing this consistent pattern of increasing over time. For English Language Arts in elementary, we're seeing the biggest changes for our Asian and our Black and African-American students. And we're going to pause here for just a moment and talk about how sample size influences the way that we think about this through the rest of the presentation, particularly because our Black and African-American student group is relatively small. So just for some context, these additional boxes here are telling you N equals how many students were in that group overall, and then the plus or minus shows how many students moved in or out of percent meets succeeds that resulted in the percentage change there. So what I want to highlight is that on the right, you're seeing the larger student groups, Hispanic, Latino, students who identify as two or more races, and our white students. And you see that bigger student movement results in smaller percent changes. Conversely, we look at our Black and African-American student group, we only have 50 students there, 51 students there, and that one student change caused a 5% drop in our percent meet succeeds. So just something to keep in mind as we move through these slides, you're going to see more movement for that group of students because the sample size is small and because the movement of just one or two students will cause those overall group trends to look pretty noisy. Again, obviously, not something that we take lightly. We still are having our eye on what's happening with that student group, but just a different way to think about when you see bounciness for that group of students throughout the presentation. So for elementary ELA growth, we're seeing that that increased for most of our racial and ethnic groups shown here. And then just pointing out, there's no kind of orange bar for our Black and African-American student group in 2022 for that same reason. In that year, there were only, there were fewer than 20 students in that student group that took CMAS and ELA in elementary, and so that's, again, another way that we're seeing the influence of that small group in how we're looking at results. For elementary math, we see that this is stable overall, and for our student groups presented here, our most notable trend is the increase for students with IEPs. This is, we saw this also in ELA at the elementary level, so this is a really exciting pattern to be seeing over time.
Just a quick question about that. The, remind us where we are with the math curriculum rollout and how that might have played into the students' IEPs performance?
At elementary?
Yeah.
We are in year one, phase one of new math materials in elementary schools.
So they're using the previous?
So yeah, this data represents the use of the last year of our previous materials.
For elementary math growth, we see that that's mixed across these groups of students, and our growth patterns are more varied in math and ELA. The biggest changes we see here are faster rates of growth for our gifted and talented students and our students with IEPs, and then a slower rate of growth there for the students eligible for free and reduced-priced lunch. Something that I do want to point out here is I gave the preamble about median growth percentile of 50 being average in the state compared to academic peers. The state also gives us median growth percentiles for different groups of students. So in particular, as an example here, our free and reduced-priced lunch students had a median growth percentile of 48. The state growth, median growth percentile for that groups of student was, is 46. So we're outpacing that group of peers specifically within the state as well, and that's a pattern that continues throughout as well. Oh, sorry?
Sure. It does seem like, you know, from 23 to 25, we've got an eight-point drop for the FRL eligible students on that. Does anybody have any reflections on why that may be? The only thing that, and we shared this in different iterations of presentations to the board, and I believe it was in 2022 is when, isn't it the Marshall fires happened? Yep. And so we had an influx of students that began to qualify for free and reduced lunch. Because of that, and then over time, it's the potential for some of those students to no longer qualify for free and reduced lunch or have moved out of the system is the only piece of information that I'd have to give any insight on, maybe something that could have influenced our free and reduced lunch growth, because at the time, we were seeing larger growth, and we cited that as this could potentially be an impact on that. I don't know if that's the reason, I just, that's another piece of information to consider.
All right. Our elementary math achievement increased across most of our racial and ethnic groups, and our trends are showing relatively positive over time since 2022 on average. Our elementary math growth is mixed by our racial and ethnic groups here. Again, we see our biggest changes kind of happening with that Black and African-American group, knowing that that's a small sample. And despite this, though, we do see, again, looking, the numbers over those fuchsia bars are 50 or higher, showing our students are on pace or outpacing their academic peers in the state. And then finally, for elementary science, you'll notice there's only three bars here. That's because there was an assessment change from the 22 to the 23 assessment, so we're only showing patterns across like assessment here. Also, we won't see growth for science because students only take this assessment in fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade, but the trend that we see here is increased scores overall across these groups of students. And then for our racial and ethnic groups, we're seeing some mixed patterns here for science. All right, so that's elementary. Moving on next to middle school.
I just want to say thank you for sharing the science scores. It's not, those are scores that we don't often look at, but it is a test that our students take, and I think it's important that we're sharing those results similarly to the ways we share math in the ELA, so thank you for doing that.
All right. So middle school English Language Arts is a big area of celebration for us. We'll see a pretty consistent pattern here. So starting off, we see an increase overall and across all of the student groups here. Looking at growth, again, increases overall and across all of those groups, seeing those growth rates being on track or at faster pace than the state averages. And then across the racial and ethnic groups, again, increases across all of the groups. And similarly, for growth for our racial and ethnic groups of students, seeing those increase as well as being on pace or outpacing the state on average. For middle school math, again, seeing increases across our student groups as well as overall. Middle school math growth is mixed. We see that students are growing at similar rates or faster than their academic peers on average, and again, pointing out this idea of some of those groups, we're seeing numbers below 50, but when we look at the median growth percentile for those specific groups of students, our students are outpacing their academic peers within group across the state on average. Middle school math achievement has increased over our racial and ethnic groups as well. And then our growth rates mixed again, but again, that same pattern of where we see numbers that are lower than 50, those numbers are still outpacing similar peer groups within the state on average. And then finally, science increased across student groups for our different groups here, as well as across racial and ethnic groups. So that was middle school.
Dr. Anderson?
I just want to pause and just congratulate our middle schools' achievement, growth. You know, when I think back to the start of the strategic plan, and I'm looking at Nicole because she was on DAC at the time, that very stagnant, if any, growth ever in middle school. And you would see elementary school performing pretty well, high school performing pretty well, and middle schools just historically not doing what they're doing now. And so I just want to thank our leaders, our teachers, everybody on our middle schools who have really leaned into the strategic plan, data-driven instruction, you know, high-quality instruction in all of our classrooms, high-quality curriculum. Want to thank board members who were on the board when we accelerated middle school math curriculum because that was such a glaring challenge. And if you're picking up on a theme here, adopt high-quality curriculum, quality professional development, you give our teachers the right resources and guidance and direction, and their talents shine through as educators, and we are seeing that. And so I'm very excited, and I'm glad that you asked the question, Beth, around where are we with the middle school or the elementary school math curriculum implementation? And that's coming. So just, just great work, I think, by everyone here, but just felt like I had to just pause everyone and say, you know, this is not the patterns we were seeing for a very long time, and just very exciting.
Okay, finishing up with high school, our PSAT, SAT, evidence-based reading and writing, we're seeing our achievement is relatively stable across our student groups. The growth is mixed across groups, but that same pattern that we've been seeing of having growth rates that are similar to or outpacing academic peers in the state. Similarly, with our racial and ethnic groups, we're seeing the achievement to be relatively stable, seeing noise around that Black and African-American subgroup of students, which is again around 50 students. For evidence-based reading and writing growth, this is mixed across our racial and ethnic groups, kind of a similar pattern that we've seen, again, seeing those rates of growth being pretty competitive or outpacing. Then high school math achievement, again, seeing that as relatively stable over time with a slight drop for our students with IEPs. And then again, that math growth being mixed, but mixed at pretty competitive high levels of growth. Oh, sorry?
This is just out of curiosity. I mean, I understand that in, after the pandemic, a lot of students, a lot of colleges were no longer requiring the SATs, and so I'm wondering if you have any idea what percentage of our students took the SATs over the last few years? I'm assuming that's trending back up. It's just a totally random kind of curiosity question, and if it has any implications in what we're seeing here.
I don't know.
It's just a thought.
Yeah.
We can get you that percentage.
Yeah. Okay. PSAT, SAT math achievement is relatively stable over time across these student groups. And then again, that same pattern of growth being kind of mixed, but again, being at high competitive levels across our state to peers. And then finally, high school science. Something to note here is that we have pretty consistent low participation in the science assessment at high school, so this represents a 15% participation rate, as opposed to at the middle school was 78%, and elementary at 93%. But we do see increased in, increases in the scores over time for this smaller group of students. And then lastly, seeing that the achievement in science is mixed across the racial and ethnic groups, here we're again seeing the smaller sample size for our Black or African-American students. We only see a bar in 2024 because in 2023, there were no students in that group who took the science assessment in high school, and in 2025, there were three students who took it, and none of them met or exceeded grade level standards. So that was a lot. So I have one slide here to kind of high summary across each of those groups. So for elementary, we saw achievement and growth improvement across both subjects, with most of our groups outgrowing their state peers. Science achievement increased overall. At middle school, we saw really strong gains in English Language Arts achievement and growth, surpassing state averages across groups. Our math achievement is up. Growth is varying, but again, generally competitive or outpacing academic peers. Science achievement increasing again. And then at the high school level, relatively steady patterns in achievement, and growth is mixed but competitive. And then again, science achievement overall rose despite our low participation.
Board members, any questions or comments on the information presented thus far? Jason?
Yeah, thanks for all this information. Just a question on the science, the high school science. Which exam is that, and why do we have such a low participation rate?
It's a state-based exam, CMAS.
And people just are opting out of taking it?
Mm-hmm.
But not opt, we don't have the same participation rates for the English and math, well, that's SAT.
No. So, you know, so, you know, we just have high opt-out rates in science in 11th grade.
There's a, PSATs prepare folks for the SAT, so I think anecdotally, students find more value in that than they do value in the CMAS exam for personal reasons. Plays into it. With the ACT, when we used to use that as a state, that included the science component, so a little different. Alex?
Sorry. Yeah, I was just looking at the PSA, PSAT, SAT-like math growth, and it seems
Yeah, I was just looking at the PSA, PSAT SAT, like math growth, and it seems relatively unstable for like FRL-eligible. I'm just wondering, is our percentage of FRL kids taking the PSAT and SAT going up? So we have a different sample on that? And I guess I am curious if we have, same for math growth by Hispanic and Latino seems relatively unstable. Like, is there something unstable in the N or the population in some of our subgroups? Because Hispanic, Latino seems bigger as does FRL-eligible. So it's not just small N, I was just wondering, is the sample?
I don't have an answer to that right now, but we will definitely look into that. It's a good thing to consider for sure.
Yeah, one, finally, follow-up. One of the things I'd be curious about, if there's, with everything we do with Grad+ and high school, as we get more kids into more higher education, are we introducing more kids to reasons to take the PSAT and SAT? And so it looks like a lower scores might be a different sample, and then that might be a clue to us to kids we need to start focusing on more earlier so that they're prepared for the higher education concurrent enrollment kind of opportunities we're presenting later. So I would like to know that. One other thing I'd be curious about, too, in general, on a lot of the growth and standard ones, I really, like, I know there's a lot of data here, but I'd be really curious to see those state averages by subgroup, like with a line through them, so that we know when we're above and below. And maybe that's an extra 100 slides, I know. But like, I really do, when you're dealing with, so look at middle school math achievement, and you're dealing with percentages like 19.6 on the achievement. So of FRL, so you're dealing with three-quarters of the kids who are not achieving at that standard. Let's say slide 28, or students with IEPs, when you're dealing with 1 in 10 students, you know, sort of meeting the math achievement standard. On its face, it's like, it's so great that we are improving, that's the only way we can get better. We are the highest-performing school in the front range, one of the highest in the country, period. And at the same time, we have students in subgroups that are not meeting standards. And so we need to celebrate, encourage, and then also understand how we improve, like the number, like, what's up with the other 80% of FRL kids that aren't meeting that standard? And yes, the growth reflects that, but it's still, there's a growth-to-standard issue. So I'm really interested in seeing what those lines look like for the state or for our comparable districts, just to get a sense of where we still need to keep the pressure on. And I don't mean pressure in a negative way. I mean pressure like we're just working really hard, everyone's doing a great job, the district is getting over the 56 different fiefdoms, doing whatever they think is best, and having a whole support structure. I mean, it's totally working, and people should be confident that the path we're on is working. And I'm just more curious about how the things that on their face look still a little low, how that really compares, helps me understand it.
Those are excellent observations. Thank you. And we would be glad to compile additional data in that appendix or a separate report if that would be helpful for the board.
And it might be helpful to report on all five levels, right? Like, how many of those kids are like one or two questions away from, or is there like, or, you know, is the vast majority on them unlike in like the first lowest level or the second level? So I think that we can nuance some of that for sure. It'd be interesting to know.
I just want to, one last time, celebrate our middle school growth and achievement. When I saw those results for the first time, the word that came to mind was finally. Finally, our middle schools are not stuck. And finally, they're approaching the same levels of growth and achievement that we see at our elementary schools and our high schools. So kudos to everybody at our middle schools for all the work that's been done, for all the changes that have happened there. That is, finally, we are making progress in a really meaningful way for those students. So kudos to district on that one.
Okay, as a final transition from all of these data slides passing on, I have three more slides. They don't have any new information from what you've already seen, but they are instead presenting information you've seen kind of in a little bit of a different way to kind of highlight some things that we're really excited about and showing some trends over time in a different, in a different way. So what we're looking at here are, is a panel for ELA, English Language Arts, and a panel for math. On the x-axis now is time, so we're looking at trends over time. And specifically, I have one slide each about elementary growth, middle school growth, and high school growth. And really kind of wanting to celebrate how we're looking at narrowed achievement gaps across these groups for English Language Arts specifically. So it's a little bit harder to tell, but from the left to the right side of the English Language Arts panel, if we're looking at the orange, the fuchsia, the blue, and the green, from the left side to the right side, those lines are converging more closely together. We have our black and African American student group coming in later, again, because of that smaller group. But seeing, seeing that trend moving both ever so slightly upward as well as those lines coming together, as we've already talked about, kind of not the same completely consistent pattern in math, but where we're moving toward with that math adoption.
What?
Sorry.
Kitty, did you have a question?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize my mic was on. No, I don't. I'm trying to get my computer to show me what I want to see. So sorry about that.
That's okay.
For middle school here, we see a pretty clear picture in, again, English Language Arts narrowing of the more disparate growth rates in 2022 to 2025 for English Language Arts. And then for high school, while the story isn't quite as clear, we can celebrate the fact that by and large, these, these growth rates are above 50 for our different groups of students and consistently so over time. So with that, I will pass this back.
I don't really have a question. I just, again, want to linger in how incredible this is. Huge congratulations to all of the staff across the entire district that's worked very, very hard to see these kinds of results. I mean, it's, it's incredible. It really is. I Googled what other districts have with, with accreditation, with distinction in the, in the state, and we're, what, one of four, I think? Total, and incredible.
14 across the state. The only other large district is Academy 20. But, and then the others are Aspen, Telluride, Cheyenne Mountain, places that look probably a lot different than we do.
Jorge?
Thank you for all the charts and tables, you know, like Alex, I'm like, oh, this is great. It's a lot, a little bit more context is helpful, I think. And I think the questions that have really helped out from the rest of the board about where are we investing our resources in terms of our reading curriculum? When are we doing the math curriculum? Because you see the progression on the charts, right? You see what we've invested, the growth has happened there. And I know it's gonna, high school's such a mixed bag, and it's a very different sort of context for students. And so I think as we move forward and focus on that more, as we're doing those changes in terms of the different opportunities, expanding access, finding a way to kind of link those better, to say, hey, here's what we've done, and here's what we're seeing in the changes, here's how many more kids are getting access opportunity, especially because like Alex, I'm looking at that going, wow, 30%, 20% are meeting or exceeding. And I know relative to other schools, that's a positive position to be in, but it's striking how much more work you need to do. So if I'm finding ways to kind of connect those, I think, and give that context, I think is, would be really useful.
One of the things I'm excited about, and board members, as you'll know, I served on the statewide accountability task force. And I was, was, I selected to be part of the post-secondary workforce readiness group that really thought about how do we measure, specifically for high schools, what does that look like? And our recommendations were less PSAT SAT-focused and more focused on things that align to what we're doing with Grad+. How many kids are earning, you know, getting college credit before they graduate? How many kids are earning industry certifications? You know, what are the things that we're doing in high school to prepare kids for their future, and how are we seeing them matriculate beyond us to, you know, to four-year universities? Right now, our matriculation rate's around 60%. And our percentage of students that graduate with a college credit is, is 82%. Four out of five kids who graduate already have college credit. So to the, so it tells a different, differing story than the PSAT SAT. For who, by the way, you know, the seriousness that you take the PSAT, if you don't feel like that's what you need to do, or if you take it, or, I mean, I think that there's variability, you know, post-pandemic around those things, especially as state universities, right? They don't require it in Colorado. I mean, it's not like, like University of Colorado does not require it. It's optional. Colorado State, optional. You know, our state universities, where the most kids apply and most kids go to, right, are amongst those that have waived that as a requirement. So I do feel like when, as, as we transition as a state to our new accountability system, that A, it's going to be great for our state, that, that these are the things, the opportunities that you're providing for kids that, and theirs being successful in, at post-secondary, I fully believe, and it aligned with recommendations from the 1241 task force. I think that was, it was 1448, 1241, something like that? There's another task force, we agreed, and move forward with that. But again, you know, as we share some of that Grad+ data with you, it just, you know, it just shows these opportunities that kids are being successful in. And so just wanted to kind of give that, give that context.
And actually, that made me think, the other interesting thing about PICT is those that are going places that they might feel having positive results is more personally beneficial, and they have the means. They are, you can take, you can have higher tutors, you can have additional supports for the PICT if that's something that you feel like you need, that, that is privatized in a way that leaves some kids out as well, and that you don't see that the same way in a CMASS, the CMASS data, too. So all those little asterisks on why, and questions around what does the data mean? What does it not mean? Who's included, who's not, I think are important things to elevate. Alex?
Yeah, I would, amongst the kudos that are due, I would give kudos to Superintendent Anderson for participating in the state-level discussions about this. And I, I know we have senior staff participating in the other work groups, too. So that is great, that we are not just sort of up to date on it, but also having a voice in how it moves forward. Because I do know, like, coming out of the Accountability Task Force, we're going to have participation rate issues that'll change some of the district accreditation stuff that will make it harder or not going forward. And so some of these things are moving things over time, and they can get highly political. And I just, I think as a district that is taking the accountability data seriously, not just because it makes us look good, because it helps us do good, is really pretty key. And there's a movement in the state to undermine the transparency for people about it, which actually undermines the ability to use it for improvement. And I encourage Dr. Anderson, our board, and our staff to continue to participate, to protect transparency, to protect an evidence-based approach to this, because it's how you get people to make difficult changes. It was one of the key parts, is to feed back and say, here's a mirror, here's how we're doing. And there's certainly a lot of effort in this state to undermine that transparency for different reasons, and that's something we should kind of resist because it helps us, and it'll help the future administration, the future board, future teachers continue to keep working on improvement. So I think that's not, it's not extra work, that's part of what we do to protect our ability to use this to make progress.
Okay, moving forward, board members, as you know, last year, we launched the strategic plan support teams with Cohort One schools, and looking specifically at the work of the schools within that first cohort. The intention of the, what we call the SPST teams, has been to accelerate the implementation of the strategic plan. And what we see here is definite celebrations, and also, we want to talk about continued support. First of all, eight out of 10 of the schools in Cohort One of SPST increased the percent of students who met or exceeded expectations in ELA. And six out of 10 increased that percent of students meeting grade level benchmark in math. While we're in year two, and we have 10 more schools onboarded into Cohort Two, all of the schools in Cohort One continue to have support on a, on a different frequency, a less frequent basis, from the SPST team. However, they have ongoing, consistent, and frequent support from their executive director and director of teaching and learning, and of course, district personnel. So the Cohort One schools, who are not in either the eight out of 10 or the six of 10 that you see here, are receiving some capacity-building guidance this year in the form of our executive directors and directors of teaching and learning having weekly visits. Very tight monitoring of 90-day plans, classroom visits, continuing to focus on specific student groups and their learning experiences, data analysis through the school, strategic school improvement process, use of walkthroughs, increasing the frequency of data-driven instruction at the schools, monitoring progress of all of the data and actions at the schools, and parent engagement of student groups and families at the schools. We do want to amplify the work of two SPST schools in particular, Aspen Creek and Manhattan. Their outcomes show that focusing on student groups along with using data intentionally to enhance teaching and learning leads to big payoff in the form of student success. So Aspen Creek, as you'll see on the left, increased the number of Hispanic, Latino students who met benchmark in ELA by 10 students. No small feat, and Manhattan increased that number by 15 students. So we're just incredibly proud of the work at the schools, and we know that this kind of precision and focus on students, really knowing them by name and need, and addressing them through support, is an excellent example of how in BDSM we're leading the way in providing more opportunities that lead to more students being successful. We're really proud of the success at the SPST schools, and the work, of course, goes beyond just implementation of DDI and instructional coaching. Schools have set intentional goals aligned to our strategic plan. And what you just saw were two incredible examples. We're excited about Cohort Two schools, which you see here on the screen, that are fully engaged. They got more of a head start than Cohort One schools in that they learned that they were in Cohort Two back in the spring, they were able to jump right into 90-day planning, go very deep on 90-day planning during the summer, and really just got a jumpstart on some of the deep work, and the cohort's progressing well already. So as we wrap up and move toward our next segment of information that we want to share with you, I just want to call out some promising proficiency that we heard in what Jessica shared with us and what we discussed. As noted in Dr. Alzine's comprehensive review, we see more student groups reaching proficiency in many student groups, are more students reaching proficiency in many student groups. And in CMASS achievement, that promising proficiency looks like overall increases in grades three through eight. At elementary and ELA increase overall, and for students with IEPs, stable math overall and increase across most racial and ethnic groups. And at middle school, which we've all celebrated, and they certainly deserve it, math and ELA increases, and ELA increases across racial and ethnic groups and other student groups. Some of the noteworthy growth that we discussed involved overall increases in grades three through eight at the elementary level, ELA seeing an increase overall and in student groups and most racial, ethnic groups. And one-point decrease in math. We've also discussed that we are onboarding new math materials now, and last year was the last year of some very old math materials in our elementary schools. At middle school, an ELA increase across all racial, ethnic groups, an ELA increase overall and across student groups, and math was stable overall and mixed across student groups. As we progress toward looking at post-secondary readiness, we see that with that measure of PSAT and SAT outcomes that we've talked about, achievement is stable overall, and as Dr. Alzine mentioned, highly competitive still, achievement and growth, along with mixed results in students meeting benchmark across student groups, and mixed gross, growth across evidence-based reading and writing and math with some improvements in some groups. Some of the celebrations and opportunities that we're contemplating are, we are excited about the celebrations in our data with all schools being at performance level, with the exception of one elementary and one middle school. With growth gains across student groups on CMASS, and shrinking those ELA growth gaps between student groups. And the opportunities that we're digging into, which I'll expand on just a little bit in the next slide, is that, you know, as I've said more than once, we're always looking for opportunities to improve and where we can continue driving toward. We want to make sure that we are driving toward more proportionate growth across student groups. As board member- As Board Member Chavez pointed out, while we're, while we're pleased with growth and achievement increases, we know that we have a lot of room for continued growth. And we want to continue reducing those disparities, and we want to continue to advance standards-based learning in every school with a greater focus on high schools, which has been certainly mentioned in this conversation. We'll continue with...
I'm sorry, I think I heard Kitty.
Sweet April Laura.
Okay. Want to finish that thought, and then I'll let Kitty ask your question.
We will continue with a focus on consistent implementation of standards-based curriculum. We've talked about how elementary has new math materials, schools are in Year One, Phase One of implementation, and second year of reading, new reading materials at elementary, and then we're in the second, we're entering the third year, but we've just had the second really robust, more comprehensive implementation year, math, middle school implementation. And last year, we did implement standards-based curricular expectations with, at middle school with the Common Lit 360 standards-based unit. So we're definitely seeing payoff there, and we know that we have continued focus in front of us. So we can pause for Kitty's questions.
Kitty, Kitty, do you want to mute your microphone? There's some interference. Maybe you can try again. There's a high degree of pulsing interference, Kitty, so we're going to have to pause on your question for now, we can't hear you.
Yeah. That was all. Yeah.
One question I had, can you speak a little bit about some of the interventions that are used for evidence, there are the reading and writing and the math at secondary schools, particularly in our high schools?
Our high, so did you say interventions in evidence-based reading, writing, and math?
And math, yeah.
Yeah, so our high schools, let's talk about math. What we know for sure is that the most important instruction is that universal instruction happening at Tier One. And our academics team is diligently focused on assessing the current state at high schools. As I mentioned earlier, we are turning our focus to high schools, just like we turned our attention to middle schools when that was needed. And looking at Tier One instruction, the assessment that's happening over the landscape at high schools is looking carefully at the implementation of new math materials at high schools, as well as the landscape of what, what materials are being used to teach quite a variety of courses in evidence, in reading and writing. And, and then from there, looking at, we don't want to jump too fast to interventions, we really want to set a strong Tier One universal instruction foundation, as we have done at elementary, as we have done at middle school, we're seeing that payoff. But we do have interventions in place, for instance, in math at secondary schools. Math 180 and Read 180 are used for those interventions for reading and math, and we have regular check-ins with not only the team, but also the publishers of those interventions to, for those data check-ins, so that our team, the academics team, deploys to provide supports to schools to ensure that Tier One instruction is in place and strengthening, but also that interventions are in place. And, you know, when we see a school, for instance, at the secondary level, whose data is not showing up as their peer or as other schools are, we look at what is the usage of this intervention, and where does it need to be shored up, and then work carefully with both the team and the principal at the school to ensure that the intervention is being used with fidelity. And so looking first at Tier One, and then using now evidence-based reading and math interventions.
No, that makes a great deal of sense. I was just thinking about the kiddos that may have started to make their way through the system before we had consistent tier level-one instruction, and that might be in high school, are kind of making their way through the system as we are also progressing through the system, so thank you for that. Kitty's question was, let me find it, do we give the ACT to juniors?
So not, not part of the, of the statewide testing program. Kids are able to sign up for the ACT and take the ACT, and there's like the, it's called the PLAN, I think is the ACT version of the PSAT, but that's self-selected, families sign up. We do, most of our, like, you know, for the SAT, we'll give it during the school day. ACT is typically after school or on weekends, not after school, on weekends, at sites that are signed up to provide the ACT. So as somebody who spent a lot of time last, while driving around finding ACT sites for my son who's going to college, so, so they do give it, but here's the thing, the state every five years does an RFP to decide what is the test that they're going to use, and it could be the ACT at some point in time, if they decide that that's a better measure of, of state standards and post-workforce readiness, they could switch from the ACT to the SAT at any point in time. But I believe they just like last year renewed on the PSAT/SAT for another, so we'll have that for another four years at least.
Any other questions, board members? Thanks.
Summing up the conversation thus far, we, we are building on momentum. We have some strong evidence-based practices in place that are taking root, and we're building momentum with these, such as 90-day plans and that short-cycle improvement, refining and expanding data-driven instruction, refining multi-tiered systems of support, consistent expectations across the K-12 environment, standards-based resources, coordinated and differentiated support to schools, and targeting support for schools with an improvement rating and who have specific needs as well. And, you know, it's, it's pretty incredible how our academics department, our executive directors, our Directors of Teaching and Learning deploy with very specific support for schools, and are, are very agile in providing that support based on what the current needs of the school are.
So board members, we, we've been having conversations over the past year and a half around, around our budget, and where are the dollars that we're investing in our budget? Where are the, how are they aligning to the outcomes that we're seeking and the results that we're getting? And so as we think about budget presentation, these are the types of things that we've invested in with dollars made by, you know, direction and leadership from this board and from our team, where we're really getting the payoff. And so as we, as we move towards budget conversations, it'll be my job to make sure that I'm bringing these forward to you all. So if you look at this, thinking about our investments with the training, the executive training and leadership that we've done with the University of Virginia, and how many schools we've brought online with that program, and how many of those schools have made significant progress, you saw the progress that we're making with the investments of our strategic plan support teams, which is a reminder, was one-time investments over multiple years to be able to give that extra focus and attention. We've already talked about the importance of high-quality curriculum and support and implementation. We've talked about the, the district-level supports, and some of these weren't new investments, they were repurposed investments on our DDI leads, and folks were doing that work, MTSS, and then just the, the entire investment in the academics team, and how they're spending their time and focused on the mission and vision of the school district. And so I just wanted to point this out, that there's dollar amounts that we can estimate on these investments to know and understand, and that, you know, in our, in our budget process, sometimes it just comes across that we're, we're just looking at new dollars that are, that are coming in. And because there's new dollars not coming in, our, our budget presentations can maybe be a little bit shallow on what we're investing in, and, and what the impacts of that are. But I just felt like this is a really good slide to give this board and give the public, like, what are the moves we're making that we feel like are helping us to continue to improve, even though two years in a row it's the best we've ever been? We're not satisfied with that, we're proud, but definitely not satisfied until every kid gives everything they need out of our school district. So I just wanted to point that out as a place where we can do, I can do as superintendent a better job of showing our, our board and our public how the dollars that we're investing are relating to the results that we're seeking.
Yeah, I just, I want to say how grateful I am for drawing those connections, because I think that's, not just for the board, but I'm thinking about our DAC and our SACS when they're having discussions about data, about strategic plan, about the budget, about policies. It's really hard to connect all the lines, but that's, like, during most of our budget discussions, I'm always like, okay, so tell me what's the important thing that's making a difference, not the difference from one fund to another, and you're getting exactly at the stuff I'd like us as a board to be, you know, familiar with, and then, you know, it works its way down through the DAC, through the SACS, to that same way. So like, one piece of information I think would be helpful when we think about the cohorts. I think about the strategies to expand to more schools in those cohorts and additional cohorts. I think we have the data before us, if we're showing the strong results of the schools that are in Cohort One, to do some comparisons of Cohort One to the other schools that aren't getting that intervention, and have the other schools go, oh, how soon can we get that in our school? And, you know, what is the difference between the eight schools in this cohort, which one's knocking it out of the park, and what's a little different? Those are the kinds of questions that if I was on a SAC now, I'd be really curious about. And so this, we already have 100 slides, it's a ton of data, we're talking about normal, everybody with a busy life trying to figure out what to do, but we are having an amazing story here that people should be able to see. And I think with a little bit of curation, we could probably make the, tell the story of the intervention from the cohorts, and show the changes in growth and achievement over time from those schools versus the others, and even show the mix of it, but still have people go, oh, I understand why we're doing that, I understand why I need to defend differentiated funding, why I need to defend the money for X, Y, or Z as part of that. So I would just try to curate it a little bit more for us on the board, but also for the DAC and the SACS and the, everybody in the schools.
One thing I just want to elevate to, this 90-day plan, talking about 90-day plans is a little bit new, but we have a strategic plan, that's a longer term, five years roughly, we have UIPs that are two-year cycles, and we have these 90-day plans, all of which are related to each other, just to get that little, those tighter maneuvers, is that correct?
Absolutely. You know, the, the short-cycle improvement, i-if all you're looking at is a five-year plan, the urgency to do something within the next 90 days, right? As, as we manage and navigate our strategy for improvement, and what we're referring to is the whirlwind of things that happen in a school and in a community, and, and, you know, we've seen a lot of those happen within the past week, that can be overwhelming if you don't have the structured guidance, directions, and support around your improvement efforts. And so 90 days, two years, five years, and then there's a waterfall and a through line for all of those things, we feel like has, has created an excellent rhythm for improvement, and actually seeing significant changes at, at the school site, but then also navigating that, and everybody being on the same page within the district on what those things look like. You know, as we started out, it was just our high support schools, and it was just Sanchez and Columbine who had 90-day plans, but then that started working, and folks were like, whoa, what's going on, what's going on with Sanchez? And then we started to expand, and we started to grow, then we formalized that growth with the strategic plan support team cohorts. And the team, all throughout, our district team, has been building high levels of capacity around these big ideas. And so, you know, part of it is the support and resources, part of it is the actual strategy and the accountability of having a plan that in 90 days you have to say whether you did it or didn't do it, and then aligning the UIPs to the strategic plan, which, I mean, for long times were like different things. But again, we had strategic plans without measures, so it was like a bunch of ideas versus like, okay, these are the things we want to do, this is what the, here's how we'll be accountable to our public, to our board, to ourselves, on whether or not these things are actually working. And now we have these short-cycle, more nimble types of plans that we're rolling out to our cohort schools in ways that are, they're just moving the bar. We are, and, and we're doing it across the district for our subgroups, and that's why you're starting to see those things move, because more folks are on board and in tune. And, and finally, and we can't forget this, we have awesome teachers and leaders, right? But, and I've, and I've shared this, you know, bad systems beat good people all the time. If you don't have the right system, structure, supports, resources, you can have the best people in the world, the system eats them up. So we've built these systems and structures, we always have had amazing people, we're giving them the right conditions, and we're starting to see the results. Really, really proud.
And that's an excellent segue to Chris Brecht, who's going to take us on a deep dive into strategic plan and UIP updates. I do want to highlight something that Dr. Anderson pointed to, which is that we've actually scaled out 90-day plans and short-cycle improvement to 100% of our schools, with the exception of two comprehensive high schools. Our high schools were able to opt-in this year, and all of them did, all of them did, but there are two comprehensive high schools that are in a development year with their 90-day plan. So we are, we have, we know that this is a very promising practice, short-cycle improvement, and are so pleased that every one of our schools is engaged.
Thank you. So we got the high-level view, we got the major celebrations across the district, and so I'm going to take an opportunity now to walk us through the really specific and intentional steps of our strategic plan. Just like Dr. Anderson mentioned, he said it in a much better way than I ever could, so I won't, it won't be too redundant, but I will walk through some visual representation of how all of those things connect, and how we're able to get to that level of intentionality of ultimately hitting some of these, these great benchmarks that we've set. So first, we'll scale out that five years, define success by 2029. That increase in achievement growth overall, and for our historically underrepresented groups, appropriate growth of students receiving academic interventions, proportional rate of students identified for special education and gifted and talented, increased percentage of students who graduate and obtain at least one grad-plus recognition, increased fidelity to the BVSD discipline framework, and decrease out-of-school suspensions while reducing disproportionality. We've already made great strides towards many of these, but the power of the strategic plan is that we're able to get to the level of specificity that we know is going to move the needle for the large work. So starting out with our four major objectives, no limits around grade, grade level standards, next best step around tier supports, define the destination, that's our post-secondary readiness, and valued and included around cultural competency. So what I'll do is I'll walk us through this a little bit, but first, again, not to be redundant of what's already been talked about, but how do we get to a level of where the, the school UIPs can identify specific actions that help us meet our large goals as an entire district? So it starts at the top, it starts with those four strategic objectives and the altogether-for-all student strategic plan. We then develop a district UIP, which is comprised of student performance priorities. We identify the major areas of improvement as a district that we want to attack. Then we identify major improvement strategies to meet those goals. All of those are aligned to those four strategic objectives. Then we create action plans on a two-year cycle as a part of a district UIP. So we are entering into the final year of this first UIP from fall 2024 to spring of 2026, and then we will begin development of our next two-year cycle of fall of 2026 to spring of 2028. As we work with schools to develop their UIPs, their 90-day plans, it's taking those specific student performance priorities and major improvement strategies, and having schools identify what within their specific school they can do, what performance priority they have, that they can align, and then identify short-cycle improvement strategies to help meet us, to help meet those targets. As a district, for the first time, we can now have a holistic view at all of our schools, identify where their priorities are, what specific actions they're taking, and how we can wrap our arms around those schools to help meet those goals. All of those goals align to those four strategic objectives at the top. So this is our strategic plan scorecard, so the board has obviously worked on the development of this scorecard. It's our commitment that we set very challenging goals, aspirational goals, for the reasons that we've already talked about, in order to meet the needs of all students. That's why you'll see us walk through our progress towards each one of these specific targets for each one of these student groups. So what I'll do here is I'll give you kind of a billboard snapshot, where we are within each of those objectives, what the major implementation strategies are, and then we will show you where we would fall on that strategic plan scorecard. So within no limits, all students are experienced grade-level standards-based instruction, our implementation strategies are professional learning on, on grade-level standards, the implementation of data-driven instruction, and the support of our district administrators in high-quality observation and feedback around all students accessing grade-level standards. For the UIP targets, you'll see here on this table that we have baseline that was set in 2024. That middle column you'll see is the target that we have hit, that we've set, and then the far-right column, color-coded, is the district spring actual numbers. So... So this is of math achievement, and what I'll do here for no limits is we'll go through math achievement, math growth, and we'll go through ELA achievement, ELA growth. So this is percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations. Each one of those student groups has been a priority for us, so you'll see that we have made progress towards the majority of each of those. We have met or exceeded our targets for our black student population, as well as Asian students and two or, or students of two or more races. And we did not meet targets for Native Hawaiian students and American Indian students.
Chris?
Yes.
Um, previously, we talked about how uh, our students, some of our students, the end size is so small and that can create some look fours or considerations in the data.
Yes.
Are we, same considerations apply here?
So it's, it's a really great point. Um, the end sizes here, we have left the targets there for transparency. We set the scorecard, we want to make sure we're tracking it appropriately. Those end sizes can be very small for the American Indian students population, that's thirty-one students, for reference for you on where we are with that. Um, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander students would be twenty. Uh, so we, again, it is a very low end size. Uh, because we want to be transparent and meet the, meet the purpose of a, of a scorecard, we want to make sure we're including it all in there. And, and we'll reference that a little bit too on how the end sizes are small across some of these targets, uh, just for context. Within math growth, you'll see there that we have met our targets for students of two or more races, as well as gifted and talented students. We made progress for white students, and that we did not meet our targets for those remaining groups. Something that is important to point out here is something that I actually think I'm very proud of is the fact that we were not afraid to set very ambitious targets within this objective. Uh, if you look at that district's spring baseline, all of those numbers are above fifty. Uh, and I will leave the technical explanation of, of how MGP is calculated to Dr. Alzine, but I will tell you that having those numbers where they are, setting growth targets uh, above that is a very ambitious goal, and one that we're not gonna apologize for, but one that we feel like is very warranted on here, uh, and we're gonna continue to pursue this.
Alex.
Yeah, on that front, I mean, I'm familiar with the MGP uh, process roughly, but it does take a lot to increase those by those percents. And I think it might be good um, for us internally, um, I, I, we want to set aspirational goals, but it's good to know like what it would actually take substantively in terms of test score increases to achieve those.
Yeah.
Cause I think uh, some of those may be entirely unrealistic. And I'm not sure as smart goals that they make sense, um, if they're not A for attainable. So like, I would do the math and find out uh, like, what percent of schools could achieve that increase to get to those MGP's in that timeframe? Cause I'm kinda dubious that some of those are smart goals.
Yeah, it's a very good point, we can certainly uh, run those numbers and identify what that is. And, and to further your point on that, one of the conversations that we've had is when we look at that district's spring baseline data and those numbers of, uh, you know, some of them are, uh, you know, fifty-nine, sixty, fifty-five, fifty-eight, fifty-six, um, of where are the, where are we in, in the, in an average of the last three years of median growth percentile? How do we set targets maybe based off of those averages, rather than improvements upon our, our previous successes? Just because specifically around median growth percentile, uh, that does allow us to make a more smart goal. So it's a, a, a very valid point, and something we're gonna consider as we develop the next UIP.
And, and I haven't done any math, so I don't know, they, they could very well be smart goals, it could be really totally set right. I just know that sometimes people will, who aren't familiar with them, will set goals and you're like, oh, like no district has ever done that in the last decade, so is, is that really helpful?
Yeah. All right, within language arts achievement, uh, you'll see that we've made great progress across the majority of the groups, with the exception, again, of American Indian students and Native Hawaiian students. Um, again, those are low end sizes, again, for reference. Uh, but you'll see that we were able to meet targets um, for um, our black student population, multi-language learners, students with IEPs, um, Asian students, and students of two and more races. We were also able to make progress towards those goals for our white student population, students who qualify for free and reduce price lunch, as well as our Hispanic students. And then here's our language arts growth. Um, obviously a lot to celebrate here across the board, across all student populations there, um, with either meeting, exceeding our target, or making some progress towards those target and all of those groups. All right, as we transition to the next best step, this is that our administrators and our educators can implement and track tiered supports and instructional strategies to engage and grow all students. Our implementation strategy around this are a really high-quality MTSS system, a multi-tiered system of support, specifically applied to academics. You'll hear us reference it applied to behavior as well, um, as well as data-driven instruction, right? Our tier-one uh, universal instructional practices that we can uh, support student growth. So we identified very specific targets within this as a part of this UIP, and that was the identification for special education and how proportional we were within that. Um, so you'll see that we met that target for multilingual learners. We did not meet that target for black students, Spanish students, or students qualified for free and reduced-priced lunch. Um, again, this is another example of where uh, the end sizes here are very small. Uh, the example uh, for the top row there on black students uh, would be um, a, a very small number in terms of how we would be able to meet that target of one point nine percent. Uh, this is again gonna be a consideration for us as we identify, again, our, our commitment to meeting these targets, but are they the right targets for us as we develop the next UIP? And how are we identifying what those targets are over time, specifically for the groups that have a very small end size?
Jorge?
I'm trying to understand how to read this particular chart. So this is, we wanna have, so in twenty twenty-four, there's two point two percent of black students who are non-IEP. And we wanna have less black students on IP a year later. Is that, is that, is that how we read this goal? Uh, cause I'm trying to understand, if students on IP, it's about a, a student's need, right? And so is it reasonable to ask the students to be off of an IP in the course of a year? Or is it more about the kind of what students bring in that we've tried to address? And is that the appropriate target? Uh, uh, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around what that means and what we're trying to achieve with this.
I think the number represents new students who are being identified. Right, so it doesn't take consideration the students that are, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris. I mean, the idea here is, that, you know, the big idea is that um, we don't want to disproportionately identify certain, you know, s- subgroups or special education services. If the issue or challenge is something different than they actually have a disability. Um, we want every kid to get the support that they need, right? But for kids who just need that support within a classroom, right? Because maybe the tier-one instruction hasn't been um, as deep as it needs to be, you know, there's, there's lots of reasons. And I think that, you know, back to Laura's point earlier on intervention, right? You start with good tier-one instruction before you start identifying intervention, because then intervention becomes the fix for poor tier-one instruction, right? I think this, this, this goes as well, but maybe, Chris, you could speak a little bit to the numbers. My, my understanding was it's the kids that are being identified.
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. These numbers are us tracking our pursuit towards proportionality for each of those groups and representations. So our theory of action with this is that if we have a high-quality MTSS system all the way through, prior to the identification of special education, that they would be able to meet their proportionality percentage for that. So that's why that proportionality number for multi-language learners is much higher than for black students. Uh, so we want to be able to say that we are meeting one point nine percent of it to be proportional with the rate of, of how other students are identified from all other groups. Um, so it, for, for context of that, it, for the end size there, um, there would be a hundred and eight students identified uh, in order for us to, or a hundred and eight black students, excuse me, be identified. Um, in order for us to meet that target, that would be roughly about ninety students would be identified within that, that would be representative of the, of the proportionality for that student group in BVSD.
So what I said was wrong?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
For the record, just a note for the record, I was completely wrong.
And I think that's the, the context I was kinda grappling with, like what does this mean? And, and some of that, maybe some of those process numbers would be helpful to understand in terms of how we're meeting this and making sure that we're doing the appropriate intervention for the population to avoid that disproportionality in terms of, you know, whether it's language or opportunity or whatever it is. Um, cause this is tricky to wrap my head around. And I'm sure probably for, um, the public would be as, as well, but that context kinda helps.
Yeah. And, and happy to provide any of the number, the end sizes there as well to help provide context for what those goals actually would look like, although the proportionality would change uh, along with our student population year over year.
Yeah, Jorge, I totally agree, I was doing a similar exercise trying to figure out how this works. I think this, I, and I understand that we've set our UIP targets this way, but I don't think we need to do our communication this way. Like, so as I understand it, um, to get to proportionality, the number of new people being identified would be equal to the percent of the population that that subgroup is. So why not show us the number and percent of students in that subgroup, and then show us the number and percent of students that are identified in that subgroup? And then the disproportionality would be, I think, more visually or intuitively available to the audience, if that makes sense. So tell us that, that African, the black students make up, you know, two point four percent of our population, which is three hundred kids. And if we had special identification proportionality, that would be identifying ninety kids. So that makes, it makes sense intuitively the way this doesn't. Like, I'm left thinking, oh, forty-four percent of our FRL kids are on IEPs? Like, that, no, that's not right at all. But forty-four, forty, whatever, you know, the percent of kids on IEPs that are FRL should be equal to the percent of kids that are FRL, and that's what's lost here.
It's a really good suggestion, I really appreciate the, the conversation around this. I think that, uh, cause then you can, you can show end size, you can show population, because proportionality would change as your proportionality as a district changes as well, right? I'm just checking myself, cause I was so wrong when I said anything before. So, so I really appreciate, uh, I pre, I pre, I think we can do a lot with this feedback, so thank you.
Beth, just wanna add one little point, thank you so much for raising this. I think cynically, if you're looking at this chart, and I think what Alex stated is a great idea, I think if you're looking at this in a more cynical way, you could go, oh, well, they're under-identifying students who need it, and as you said so eloquently, students with special needs, the goal is not about getting to a percentage that we identify, the goal is about meeting whatever their individual needs are, right? Of course, and I know, we all know that, but I want to make sure that's obvious in the data that we're sharing with the public, that we're not trying to artificially identify less students to meet a percentage goal, does that make sense?
It absolutely makes sense, yeah. Okay, uh, as we move on to define the destination, uh, this is, um, important context here is that we state, define the destination, our long-term goals is that throughout their PK twelve career, all students access career exploration opportunities and earn at least one of the following, industry certification, college credit, work-based learning, or syllabi literacy. Uh, and I'll explain a little bit why it's important context for that. Uh, so our implementation is, is career exploration opportunities at all levels that are creating very clear course pathways for students based on their career interest, and that students' academic experiences align to their post-secondary goals. So as we look at our UIP targets for post-secondary preparation, uh, the context that I would, would I um, provide here is that we, we know we have great success across the entire grad plus framework. Uh, you may recall a presentation from Dr. Diego's in the spring, uh, where we talked about the expansion of all, uh, and increase in opportunities across all four quadrants of the grad plus framework. Uh, what you see here is a representation of specifically work-related academic experiences for the graduating class of twenty twenty-five. And the reason that's important is that while we are increasing, and we know we are increasing those opportunities, PK twelve, we are only representing a lag measure here as a part of this scorecard that says of the students who are graduating this year, how many of them would receive this, um, this recognition as a part of grad plus. So, uh, it doesn't tell the entire story of all the success within grad plus, it's why we have very specific targets within the UIP, uh, so that we can, we can try to make very specific actions toward them, but wanted to provide a little context for where we are within that.
Alex?
Yeah, um, when we've discussed the strategic plan before, I've, I've raised this issue, but I think this is one in particular with end sizes is really necessary, because we were dealing with super-low numbers in the first place, and uh, we're dealing here with changes, I believe, in these populations of like one student or two students. So, um, that's why I don't think this is actually the best measure of the grad plus stuff in the first place, because it would take such small ends to like change the percentages, um, based on what we had before. So, um, I think presenting this one without the ends, um, uh, shows us like we need to increase the whole thing, but I'm still not sure this is the most important measure of the grad plus programs.
All right, finally, the last objective, undervalued and included, that all students feel valued and included in their learning environments. They engage in restorative practices with students when appropriate, and schools consistently apply recommended resolutions for specific disciplinary events. That's the discipline framework in BVSD. So our implementation around this has been a cultural competency focus, the implementation of that discipline framework, the increased use of restorative practices, and MTSS applied to behavior. So our scorecard here, uh, well, again, I, we've said this across all of these topics, but there are some low end sizes here for these groups as well, um, that really make a difference for those groups that you see that we did not quite meet the target, that very much can be the difference of one student. And then the very bottom row there, you'll see that the rate of restorative interventions, we do continue to increase that rate of restorative intervention across the system. So our next step is to, although we know we have a great success across the strategic plan, uh, we have so much to celebrate, we know that we have opportunities for improvement given within these specific targets that we set within the UIP. Uh, so our task is to identify what those opportunities are and figure out what specific short-term goals we can do to support these goals uh, before the end of the school year, as well as what goals we might propose to take forward into future UIPs. So one opportunity for improvement that we saw within no limits was the inconsistency around our math growth. Uh, so again, those are some high MGP numbers, starting from a baseline, but we do want to see more consistency in that. Um, so regardless of what our final uh, targets are for our future UIP, we do feel like there's opportunities for improvement there. Um, as we've talked about, that comes in, uh, along with the implementation of new curriculum, so the implementation of a lesser method elementary, and at cross-K twelve, we are at some form of implementation of, of high-quality math materials, uh, either year one, two, or three, across all levels within BVSD. And then in addition to that, the ongoing implementation of DDI. So, uh, as we adopt new curriculum and as teachers become more comfortable with the use of new curriculum, it be, it makes the use of data-driven instruction all that more valuable as we focus in on math to help support the growth areas for our students in that. And that applies for middle school and high school, as we have specific math teams, obviously, that are gonna be narrowly focused on math, not just, uh, whereas in elementary, it could be math as well as literacy. And the final thing I'll say here is that the use of short-cycle improvement uh, is really gonna be critical for us as we, as we align our supports of students or our supports of schools. So, um, as I mentioned previously, we're able to now identify where schools see that they have opportunities for improvement, they're able to look at their school-specific data, um, and then set specific targets around that, we're now able to support them in that as well.
I just wanted to see, there was a little that funny sound interference, I was wondering if Katie had a question again? Oh, yeah, your mic is still making that funny noise. Katie, if you have questions, you can just send them to me and I will elevate those for you.
Uh, the other area there for improvement that we see around next best step is around special education referrals, uh, and how we address the proportionality rate there. So we have established an MTSS action team. Uh, the purpose of that is to identify and address any barriers to meeting this target that we might have as a district system, taking a very deep dive into what that data is telling us and what it is that we can do to impact it. Um, we also have brand-new MTSS implementation data for the first time. So, uh, at the end of last school year, our MTSS team was able to meet with all schools in BVSD to identify where they are within their MTSS implementation. Uh, so that will impact our decisions from that action team on how we best support where schools are with the highest-quality MTSS that they can have in their building. Um, and then this new action here is, again, like I said, being able to identify what can we do more urgently? This isn't just in preparation for the next version of the UIP, but what can we do to impact schools as they prepare for their next version of the ninety-day plans, which will be in the spring? Um, and how can we give them um, more resources, more support, uh, in order to help meet some of those goals? So as we identify strategies that we feel like might be able to impact some of those numbers, uh, we will then see how they play out in the spring, the things that were working really well. We will then expand that use into other ninety-day plans in the upcoming year, as well as the upcoming UIP.
Just a quick comment, I really appreciate the work the district's doing around MTSS. Um, we speak often on this board about differentiation. and this is one way in which I feel districts are able to kind of meet that need. As hopefully the public understands, you know, MTSS is greater and greater differentiation essentially for students. It doesn't work at tier ones, we go to tier two, tier three, and so on, right? But I'm really happy to see this. I would, I look forward to seeing the MTSS implementation data and what kind of factors we're looking at for that. That sounds really exciting, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's, we're very excited to be able to have some baseline data for us to be able to further support schools in their implementation of that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just really appreciate that, because I feel like we can, Beth, we can so fall into the acronyms and stuff. And I really do think this translates into, the district has a system to support schools, so the schools have a system to make sure all their kids get the support their particular child needs. Like, that's what this turns into when we're done. And the more we can do it, the better we get at it. And then what do you know, our results get better. It's not that the results get better and our graph looks better. It's that your individual child in Boulder Valley will get services that are better, more tailored to their need. And that we have as a district are making sure the schools have a system to try to make that happen, which again is leveraging the fantastic teachers that we have in our great schools, but giving them like the support they need to do something different. And I'd love to see the implementation of that. And I'd also like to see, as we get the data on the implementation of that, Randy's team help us figure out how to tell that story. Again, letting parents see what that looks like in real practice, I think would be really helpful.
Yeah. Similarly, we see these, an opportunity for improvement within our valued and included and increasing that proportionality of suspension rates. So we're going to take on a similar task, where we have a district working group to identify what, if any, potential barriers we have at a system level to support schools in that, in meeting that target. And then this is where MTSSB comes into place. So I said, we talk about MTSSA when we think about interventions, and we think about special education referrals and proportionality of that. But also, how are we applying those tiered supports to the behavior interventions that schools are dealing with as well? So that implementation data is going to impact both of these initiatives greatly. We also have some high-quality recommendations from BeWell, from our partners at Crown Institute, to help inform this team as well with some action steps from SCL and from mental health aspects as well. So you'll be getting some additional information on that in the coming weeks and months to outline how all of those things play together. And then we're going to continue to build on the success of restorative practices. So we have continued to see an increase in restorative practices across the system. This is not in addition to MTSS, it's a part of MTSS. And that's why I have outlined here what we're talking about in terms of what's the universal practice, the targeted practices, and the intensive practices there. What are we doing to prevent and promote good behavior within that? What are we doing to respond and repair when damaging behaviors takes place? And then how do we intervene within that? So it very much does fall within the MTSS framework there. And we're going to continue to build on the momentum that we have around restorative practices.
Thanks, Chris Jorge.
Thank you for the detailed plans and all this. It's great that I feel like we're moving in the right direction. We're focusing on the right stuff. I'm curious to what degree the disproportionate discipline suspension rates, restorative justice transition is part of the curriculum conversation? Because the groups that are high and disproportionate in terms of suspension are the exact same groups that have really small Ns that are in our kind of under-achieving groups as well, right? Who need the most help and supports. Their rates are double the average, probably three times the non-groups, right? In terms of suspension, that's just the tip of the iceberg in terms of other incidents that are happening in schools. And it's tied up with things like climate, class disruptions, being pulled out of the classroom, which is going to clearly affect their ability to perform well in school. And so we've done, for a long time, a lot of things at the district level in terms of, are we counting the right things? Are we using, are we training people to have the rights of implementations? But is it possible for us to use these cohorts to also look at this as well in terms of, what is the climate in the classroom? How are these kids being addressed in the classroom before it gets a suspension? I feel like it's time to maybe start moving towards more targeted things, to think about at the ground level, what does this look like? And where, because it's, I think, I feel like it's intertwined with our curriculum and our results. And I feel like this has been lagging and continues to be there. And it's dropped from where we were six years ago tremendously, but I feel like it's kind of stalled out since that time. And I'm trying to grapple with how we get around some of that. And I know it's, I don't have an answer for it, so I guess it's more questions about possibilities.
I appreciate that, Jorge. You know, the idea that small numbers but disproportionate numbers are not okay, and large-scale improvement efforts versus potentially looking and doing some, just really deep dives on what's actually happening on the ground? Like, how do we put eyes on it? And what does it look like? And there's something to learn from there. I don't know what the answer is, just like, I mean, I do think that there's an opportunity for us to think about what we could do there. But, you know, the, you know, the more you improve, right? If you're not, and the smaller the, you know, the numbers get, I do think that we're going to have to be thinking about different things so we can kind of not stall out improvement efforts and say, well, this is the best we can do, because we can always do better. So I really appreciate that perspective.
I appreciate that, and I feel the same way. I mean, if you look historically at the long-term data, we had such a big drop once we made the actual policy change of stop doing this, that the N size of the suspensions went way down. So now we're dealing with a pretty small tail of the curve, not to minimize it. But one thing I think to think about, and again, not to get ahead of ourselves, but as we measure our current strategic plan, our current UIP targets, and we deal with our 92-year and, you know, five-year targets, I think this is an area where we want to start gathering the information that informs the next strategic plan's target. And just saying we want to decrease proportionality of suspension is probably not the high-leverage thing in the next few years, to Jorge's point. And there's more leverage to be gained by the next level of analysis, because we could focus on this proportionality and be missing the classroom climate issue that's more impactful. So that's why I'd love to think about, as we gather data on this one in particular, and on the wellbeing and the climate stuff, like, what are the measures that are high-leverage moving forward? Because this one may not be driving as much change as it should in terms of the actual, in the classroom practice.
I really appreciate all those comments. What I will say is that as a district team and how we're structured in having those conversations, we have very much came to the same conclusion that we're talking about here today. Previously, we would have looked at, what are the systems and structures we have in place to track these appropriately? Do we have the discipline framework in order to see if we're adhering to it in a proportional way? Are we doing the right responses to it? Those conversations are very much rooted in, today, are very much rooted into root cause. What's happening at the classroom level? What's happening at an academic level that's impacting a disciplined data set, right? So the root cause and the action steps that we are now going to be able to build into the next upcoming UIP, I'm incredibly excited about. I think our team is incredibly excited to be able to take that next step. We've built that opportunity for ourselves to get to that level this upcoming year.
And then I'd, our executive directors and directors of teaching and learning, assistant superintendent of schools, are, they're working very diligently alongside our, one of our directors of Student Support Services, who's focused on behavior, restorative practices, and interventions to look very specifically at what are the classroom incidents? What are the playground incidents? What are the interventions that are needed? How can we promote classroom-level strategies around prevent, promote, and respond and repair alongside classroom expectations? So really looking at exactly what you just indicated, which is what are the classroom and school-level sweeps and views to support through interventions, through support and strategies and professional learning that are needed at the school level? And so that's exactly where the school's team is taking this next.
Okay, good morning. I think I'm going to take us through to the end of our day of much data. So this morning, I'm happy to share that we have updated our Strategic Plan Key Performance Indicator Dashboard. It's been updated with the school year '24-'25 results. So what I'm planning to do is just go over some of those highlights, some of the drill downs trends over time that you can also now go and see in the dashboard. That's linked in the slides. So I'm not going to go to it live, but a couple of things I just wanted to point out and remind about that dashboard if you, when you do go and visit it online. One new feature that was added is a data glossary, so a glossary of terms, because I know there is quite a lot of information, some technical information in this dashboard. So we're just trying to always increase the supports and resources around that. You also have access to this snapshot dashboard. A reminder here, and I will show some screenshot examples. A lot of the numbers are shown on this top level, but it's also interactive. So you can go in and hover, get more explanation, more information. And then there is also that drill-down tab within the dashboard as well. And of note, there you can access any of our school-level data as well. So just a lot of features there, and it's all updated, so please take a look at it when you can. One other reminder about what is contained in the dashboard is that these are all lagging measures. So these are kind of longer-term student outcomes. I will talk a little more about this, especially with Grad+, but that's a good example to keep in mind. With Grad+, we're looking at graduating cohorts. So students who are achieving the highest level once they graduate. So within this dashboard, we don't necessarily directly see a lot of those implementation numbers, kind of what we're tracking along the way, which you've seen a bit of that so far this morning. So just keep that in mind. These are really those long-term summative yearly outcomes that we're looking at for our students. So the way I've organized this, I'm going to have a few slides per quadrant of the strategic plan. That's also how that KPI dashboard is organized. So first, and this will be, this one will be a little bit of a rehash of what you saw earlier, but focusing on student achievement. So the difference here is for our KPI, we are combining together elementary, middle, and high so that we have one kind of global indicator of that. But again, the trends are going to be similar to what Jessica had presented to you earlier. So I'll a little bit quickly go through this, and then we'll get into some more BVSD-specific metrics. So overall, this is what we're seeing for our KPIs around achievement. Remember with our KPIs, we are focusing on three focus groups at the high level. And again, you have drill down to all other student groups as well. But for what I'll be showing at this level, we've got all students, our students who are FRL-eligible, and students who are Hispanic-Latino. So as we can see, kind of the trend here is relatively higher achievement percentages in reading and writing compared to math, and that gap that we are always watching and talking about between our student groups. We can also look at the trend over time. So whereas we just saw a snapshot of 2025, the dashboard also has the ability to drill down to a three-year trend. And what I'm going to highlight in my slides here is a year-over-year change, so going from 2024 to 2025. And so in general, with achievement across all levels, we see a couple-point increase across the board in student groups and across content areas. So, yeah.
I just wanted to elevate a comment from Kitty, that she said it would be good to show what percentage of students participated. I think it might, it shows it in the dash, live dashboard, but I think your numbers may have covered it up, your bubbles covered it up on this one.
The participation numbers.
The participation numbers.
Yeah.
Shows the numbers tested, maybe not the percent of people that...
I see.
Total population, I think is what she's asking.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's good feedback. I think it's in the hover over on the dashboard, but that's a good feedback for the presentation. Thank you. So just a few trends to lift up here. Achievement in ELA and math increased overall and among students in those focus groups that we just saw. There were some notable increases, and I'm calling two or three percentage points notable here among FRL-eligible, Black, Asian, and two-or-more-racist students in both math and ELA, as well as Hispanic-Latino, multilingual learners, and students served through an IEP in ELA. Moderate increases, that's like one percentage point increase, were seen among white students in both content areas, as well as Hispanic-Latino, multilingual learners, and students served through special education in math. And we did observe declines in achievement among American Indian and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander students. So I know this one's a bit of a rehash, but any questions here? Okay. So now we'll get into some more of our BVSD-specific metrics. So for next best step, we're looking at student growth. And the new part that we are offering through the dashboard is specifically looking at student groups tied to interventions. So we have, again, the growth numbers, median growth percentile for our three focus groups. And additionally, for this metric, students who had a documented intervention in the aligned content area. Now, this is also a visual in the dashboard where you can drill in by hovering on the data points, and that's where I'm going to show some examples here. So this is, I tried to approximate this with my slide, but this is what the drill down kind of looks like. So if you hover over those groups for all students, you can see a direct comparison between the students who received an intervention last year and those who did not. And so here's the comparison for all students in reading and writing and math. Just something I want to lift up here is if you look at that reading intervention group, the median growth percentile overall for that group is 53. So those students, you know, one thing we know is that they have been identified because they were achieving at a lower level. That's why they got identified for intervention. And we are seeing their growth outpacing peers across the state. So that's a really promising number, to see that go over 50. In general, you know, again, we know these are students whose achievement numbers are lower, and we would just hope that we see some elevated growth for them. So that's sort of the pattern we're looking for. Yeah, not, not the same direction for math, but, yeah.
Yeah, can you back up to the previous slide?
Yes.
So for all students in reading and math, the median growth percentile was 57%? Or is that of the people who got tiered interventions or didn't get tiered interventions?
Yeah, so the all students, those blue bars, that's all students intervention or not, inclusive of everybody.
So that's sort of a baseline for median growth percentiles. And then you go to the next slide, and that's where we see that the, those that received a reading intervention are four points behind those that didn't get a reading intervention in terms of their growth, right? Is that what that's telling us?
Correct.
So what does that tell me? Because I'm still not sure that using median growth percentile is the right way to capture the tiered interventions. I mean, it's the median, so it's the people in the middle. And our tiered interventions are dealing with people farther out from the median, sort of by definition. They're going to have performance issues that mean they need more interventions. So you could change everything below the median and everything above the median, and the median wouldn't change, because it's the 50th percentile of the kids in the middle for the growth percentile. So I'm still, this is one where I'm like, I don't think this measures what we want it to, and I still can't even understand what it's getting at. So like, if you, if you have a kid who has a reading intervention, you've identified that they're behind in reading, and they're getting extra time with a teacher, and they're way behind, they could make tons of growth, and you wouldn't see that reflected in the median, because the median is the 50th percentile. So that's, I'm still, I have a disconnection on this one for how we're getting that, what we want to measure, or even understanding what it's telling us about the population that we are trying to talk about. And I understand that growth captures everybody, but if we had, if someone told me the growth of the bottom quintile or decile of students, and the change in that, then I think I might have an understanding of reading interventions. Or if someone told me the growth by the top decile, then I'd have an understanding of interventions for gifted and talented or accelerated kids. But this median just doesn't make any sense to me. Can someone speak to why, how this works?
And just to clarify, I mean, is your question about kind of the baseline or the reference number that we would want to be looking for?
I guess my, my question is about like the hypothesis or the theory behind this one. Like, that's why I just, I just don't get how median growth percent, or haven't before. And now I'm still more confused by what I'm seeing. So the way that Colorado measures growth is different than in other places that I've seen measured growth. It's all about comparison, right? Versus how, how much are you growing based on what you know around the curriculum? It's how much are you growing in comparison to people that look, the kids that looked like you the previous year? Right? So it's tricky, Alex, I hear what you're saying. So median growth percentile is the, is the growth measure that everybody uses and sees, right? I hear what you're saying around the median growth percentile. You know, you would, you would, I think that, like Claire said, the pattern that you would hope is that if a kid is growing above 50%, they're growing above their like peers. If they're growing below 40, if they're below 50%, they're growing less than their like peers. What it doesn't, you know, the limitation of median growth percentile is, you know, how much, how close are they getting to, to meeting standards? Right? I mean, so, and, and our state doesn't calculate that growth that way. When I was in a principal in Florida, that's how they, every year, they said, okay, if you got, you know, appropriate growth is this many points improvement from the last year. And there's lots of calibration, it was just a lot more money invested at the state level to kind of think about those things. And I don't want to, and, and this is where I think sometimes it can get tricky, you know, accuracy versus understandability, right? Because when we say, oh, every kid gets a growth score, right? And if you start to think about growth in a different way, then that growth score is then, is then reported. But maybe we should get offline a little, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, I just, I'm not really sure. I'm not really sure how we would, how we would get there unless it was just a more nuanced, like if you were to take like certain, like the bottom quartile kids was their average growth, then the second quartile, the third quartile, the fourth quartile. And we, and you would have to align it, I guess, based on achievement, like some kind of achievement growth alignment, which is not something that the state does. I'll have to think about it. Yeah, I, I'd be delighted to follow up offline. I just, I continue to have concern that this one's difficult to understand, and I'm not sure it's capturing what we want it to. So I'd love to talk offline about it in the long. And again, I think it's one where we could learn from it for what we do in the future in terms of metrics to get better at understanding the impact of our interventions. For me, the, the question really is even when you compare them, I, I understand that the student is being, their growth is being compared to a student who's in that same class, who had the same original score. So as things go up, it does improve, but you're still dealing with the, with the medians of that and not the, and you could reflect the distribution with other measures too. So that's why I'm not sure median is the right way to go.
All right, thank you. We'll just continue on a few more slides of this metric as we have it now. So here's the drill down with students who are FRL eligible across content areas. And within that group, that comparison between our intervention and no intervention group. And then here's what that looks like for our other focus group of Hispanic Latino students. So that's the state of things for the 2025 results. And then to lift up what we are seeing for that growth over, or change over time. So here I've just highlighted again those two year changes. This is in our three focus groups and then our additional intervention groups here. So kind of again, following the trends we saw earlier for our focus groups, we're seeing some upticks in the growth numbers for reading and writing and some declines in the growth numbers for math. I think interestingly here, this pattern, as we're looking at it here, was even more pronounced among those students with an intervention groups that we're looking at. So a higher increase for reading and writing and more of a decrease in math year to year. So I think, you know, also looking at this, I think it's going to lead more of our follow up and questions. And I appreciate some ideas of different ways that we might dig deeper into it. So just noting the trends here, growth is strong overall. Again, if we step back and do that comparison to the 50th percentile, we are seeing strong growth. But of course, we are digging into groups and seeing where we can keep pushing improvement. Growth was stable or increased across all groups in reading and writing. Just when I was looking through the drill down results, a couple standouts I saw in reading and writing were among multilingual learners and Black students. And then growth was stable or decreased for most of our groups in math, with the exception of students identified as gifted and students who identify as two or more races. And then that BVSD specific metric around students who received an intervention, positive trends with the reading interventions and bringing up questions to guide our follow up around math interventions. Okay, so moving along to our define the destination quadrant. For this metric, we are looking at a snapshot of Grad Plus medals and pins among the class of 2025. Just one very quick caveat, when I say class of 2025, that is at this time preliminary. We will be getting finalized graduating cohort, graduation statistics later this school year, but we have a good set of data to start with for that. So just know these might change a little bit later in the year as we finalize that cohort. Also note here, I mentioned again how we're looking at lagging measures. And this really, I think, hits home with the Grad Plus metrics. So this is the culmination, the culminating out, outcome for student work that happens across their time in BVSD. But it is a snapshot of what we see when they graduate and that plus piece. What are they getting in addition to a diploma? So of course, keep in mind that the Grad Plus framework also includes opportunities leading up, so pre-K through 11, that really support students in reaching these highest levels of achievement in each of these areas. That's not necessarily, some of the work in those initiatives will not necessarily show in this dataset until future cohorts of students are graduating. So I think on one hand, we already do have a lot to celebrate, and I think we're going to hopefully for years, future years to come, see more of the impact of the great work that is happening now. So I think the, there's a lot of information here. So what we're breaking down is each row is one of our focus groups. And then each column going across is looking at the pieces of Grad Plus. So Grad Plus overall represents percentages of students who achieved in one or more of the areas of the Grad Plus framework. And then the next four parts of this chart show what those areas are. So those are industry certification, seal of biliteracy, work-based learning, and earning a college credit in high school. So I think what tells the, the story here is looking at that change over time. And so that's what I'm highlighting on this slide is the percentage point change among each of our groups in each of those areas of Grad Plus. So we do see increases across groups for Grad Plus overall. A little bit more modest change in industry certifications and work-based learning. A little bit more notable increase in seals by literacy and strong increases in students achieving college credit.
Kitty?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yay, I'm on my third piece of technology logging in. I just want to comment on how impressive the Grad Plus numbers are. In just two years, we have so significantly increased the number of students, the percentage of students who've achieved one or more of the Grad Plus elements. So I just want to really give a shout out to everybody who's been working on this because it's excellent work.
Thank you. Yeah, this was a fun slide to put together and look at these results, definitely a celebration for a lot of us here. So just to, to name some of these trends and lift up a few really promising trends. We did see that increase in our graduates achieving in one or more areas overall and among our student focus groups. And that was really, a lot of that was bolstered in the area of earning college credits. Those increases are very impressive. And then a few trends, as I looked at the drill down and looked at different student groups that I just wanted to lift up. Multilingual learners earning the seal of biliteracy increased by six percentage points. Students served through special education achieving in work-based learning increased by seven percentage points. And Hispanic Latino students earning a college credit increased by 12 percentage points. So, good numbers. Okay, and then finally, in the area valued and included, we're looking at both climate survey results and suspension rates and rates of restorative interventions. So just to quickly recall, our KPIs have that climate survey composite. So that's looking at percent of favorable responses across three of the questions in our student climate survey that's given every year. A suspension rate, we've touched on that earlier, and our restorative intervention rate. So students who have a behavior incident, how many had a restorative intervention as some part of that resolution? So here it is for our three focus groups. And then let's take a look at the trends over time. So the climate survey, percent positive responses, that stayed really quite stable over time and in the last few years in particular. Our suspension rates, we shared a little bit of that around our targets, but that has some very, also some small variations year to year. Generally, on the three year trend, we're moving in the right direction. And as we've noted, there's still work to do here. And then our restorative intervention rates also, you know, a couple percentage points up and down. So pretty stable at this time. So to bring that all together, our climate survey responses were stable for most groups. I did note some decreases in favorable responses among American Indian and Black students. So that's something we will be looking into and following up about. I noted that our suspensions continue to trend downward in our three year trends. Despite that slight 0.1% increase year over year. Just a trend within that is our suspension rates remain highest at the middle level compared to elementary and high school. We're, you know, watching that throughout the year. And then our restorative interventions are holding steady relative to a bigger jump historically. So if you remember last year, when we launched the KPI dashboard, we saw like a really big jump in our, now four years ago, trend of restorative intervention. That was related to just focus on the work, having FTE support for really diving into that work. And so it's, it is nice to see that that jump has held steady now over time.
We'll go Elena since you haven't participated in Jorge.
On that slide, we have the decrease in favorable responses among American Indian and Black students. And you say we're going to follow up. What are we doing in terms of the follow up?
Yeah, well, I think for now, just understanding what that trend was. I think what I would like to do as a next step to you is look at that at the school level and see if we can start to, I think, you know, school level, grade levels, and just try to pinpoint more what's driving that.
Thank you, I would appreciate that very much. I'm always concerned when I see specific demographics having a reduction in that favorable response, and if it's at particular schools with particular administrations that we really hone in on it. So I appreciate that.
I, I would add into that too. We, we do have quarterly vortex meetings in which our directors are leading collaborative conversations with building leaders around those specific data and identifying what causes or of those as well. And we're also asking that as they identify where those gaps are, that those are part of their 90 day plan action steps as well.
Thank you. As a follow up to that, in terms of administration of that survey, do you look at response rates as well? Because especially for a population that's small, if a few students don't respond, I could really fill the numbers off. But that also might be a reflection of them not feeling connected as well, so.
Yes.
That's an important one to kind of key into. Again, I'm trying to interpret some of the numbers on the previous slide. Percent with restorative interventions, it's around 48 for all students as a part of that. So does that mean of all the kids who had to have some kind of disciplinary incident, 48% received a restorative intervention? And the remaining percent received some kind of more serious intervention or less serious intervention? Or how do, how do I interpret that 48%?
Yeah, so the, the group of students that we're looking at is all the students who did have some kind of, you know, documented behavior incident. So that's kind of our pool that are, that we are drawing from. It could have been one incident, it could have been multiple over the year. We're not actually looking at that part, it's just that group of students. And then across all of the resolutions that were documented, was at least one of them a restorative practice resolution? Yeah, so it is pretty broad at this time, and we've had different ways. And we do, at those vortex meetings, I think that's a good venue where actually our administrators can go in and look incident by incident to review what was done. We look at, you know, the level of response, appropriateness of response, and kind of debrief all of those pieces. So this is a very, I'd say pretty high level metric of that. And then internally, we are definitely drilling into that with more detail.
Alex?
Thank you. I have, on that one, following up on the restorative justice, do we have, can we like do the cross tabs of the percent favorable responses from the climate survey of the students who are participating in restorative justice versus others? And find out how those people are feeling about their school and their climate? And then the second part for me is, and I assume the, the students with the restorative intervention, the, the sample of that, does that include a kid who's, the one who's found that did the action? Or the kid that is involved in disciplinary action by being on the receiving end of something unfortunate? And so I know as a school board member, I hear from people who've had a dissatisfactory experience on either end of that. And I don't know how to put that within scale or perspective other than the trauma and the anxiety that the individual students and their families are facing. So I'd like to know if the restorative justice is restorative, then ideally the people who are participating in it end up with a higher view of the climate of their school when they're done. So I would love to connect those two somehow, and maybe these aren't the data to do that. But like the exit interview of the families involved in disciplinary proceedings would be really quite helpful. And that'd be something you could track over time that would get at, do people feel restored? Do people feel included? Do people feel safe? And what's the proportion of that 1,323 students compared to the 11,000 of all students who have a favorable response? How many of them are having a favorable response when they're done? And I, I don't know how, I don't know whether that's methodologically possible with the data sources or, or how to do it. But I know that we as board members, at least, and I know the school administrators deal with folks who've had dissatisfactory experiences with it. And that's something that we're trying to get at substantively.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good question, and I think worth exploring what we can do there. Just to clarify what's in the KPIs, that is specifically students who were, who did the action, both for suspension rate, of course, and for restorative practices.
Yeah, because if, if there was like a, if somebody was impacted by somebody, we wouldn't put in a behavior incident for that person on their record because it would be like a false negative, just, you know, so we could track it and, and measure it. But you know, the, you know, the theme here is, is, you know, think about the levels of data and conversation and, you know, that, that we're now able to start talking about where, you know, four years ago, I couldn't tell you whether, how many kids actually had anything. Everybody remembers that, right? Like we had a system that was, everybody was kind of cooking up their own system, there wasn't a consistency. So, you know, these, these are great problems to have that we've actually been able to create some really good systems and structures. And then how do you nuance and look at it differently to, to begin to, you know, continue to improve? So I really do appreciate the conversation.
Well, first of all, this has been a very robust conversation, and we are so grateful for your input, for your engagement. You've given us some excellent feedback for us to take to next step, so thank you. I want to anchor us back to our theory of action here on this slide, which really culminates a lot of work.
a lot of work. It not only links to our theory of action, but also to progress in opportunities, growth, and achievement in BVSD. Just looking back to 2022, when the path was mostly cleared for progress after the pandemic, the opportunities that have been created since that time are many, and what rise to the top are just a few here. Purchasing and implementing seven new curriculum that are, curricula that are standards-based, adherence to an assessment framework, the creation of an assessment framework behind that, utilizing differentiated funding to expand support sets at schools based on need and advancing that to a structured and consistent focus, the development of and refinement of and implementation of a discipline framework district-wide, scaling out DDI across all schools and continuing to refine and expand this, launching in earnest the grad plus framework, as board member Sergeant named, it's really just been a couple years since we launched that to incredible success. Short cycle improvement planning in all schools through 90-day plans, consistent instructional expectations across the K-12 landscape, just to name a few. And as we take a look at growth, again, just looking since 2022, we've consistently outpaced metro districts and state, and the state in math and reading. Our students are surpassing and well above the state average, and while we're not there yet, we're not satisfied with where we are, our growth gaps have narrowed in English language arts for students in kindergarten through eighth grades. And, and then finally, the culmination of achievement. So the opportunities and growth leading to achievement, the percent of students meeting benchmark in math and reading have increased, as you see here. And although the grad plus framework was born just a little over three years ago, we really began recognizing students for their achievements in the four quadrants just two years ago in 2023, and in that time, we've seen a 20% increase in recognitions with the graduating class of 2023, having 67% of students receiving a recognition, and last year, 87% receiving a grad plus medal in pins. And as the board knows, we've been very focused on decreasing disproportionate discipline, and as you've heard in this conversation, we have seen a decrease in out-of-school suspensions for student groups and overall, a, a small but overall decrease in out-of-school suspensions. And as Dr. Anderson said, we're proud of our outcomes, but we're not satisfied. And having said that, we are pleased to present this summary of how the Altogether for All Students Strategic Plan has elevated opportunity growth and achievement in BVSD and across students. I wanted to share a little bit about our change process or the, or how we've managed change in BVSD. We've really focused on three process timelines, development, implementation, and results. And so during the initial stages of the Altogether for All Students Strategic Plan, we were focused on the development of resources, which eventually became delivered through our instructional playbook and are still delivered through our instructional playbook, which is quite robust. Our focus then shifted to the strategic implementation, or identifying the right intentional steps to take and a collaborative approach to ensure success for our teachers so that we could have success for our students, and the implementation of strategies that created the opportunities for students. And since 2022, we've been focused on, and have seen the results of the strategic work through growth across our system, through narrowing gaps in student groups, and unprecedented achievements in Boulder Valley School District, making the theory a reality, that opportunity leads to growth, which leads to achievement. I think that's a great slide. In fact, it might be my favorite slide, just to really concisely show our, how our theory of action is really impact, is being implemented to really impact the growth and achievement of our students and supporting our instructors that are elevating those experiences. Board members, any final questions on this incredibly thorough presentation from our team? Jason?
Yeah, thanks very much. Actually, in the two years I've been on the board, I've kind of thought about, like, is there something that really summarizes this work? And this is, to Nicole's point, this is a really great way to end this conversation, and I feel like something we should continue to highlight and show, whether in budget conversations or to the public. For me, at least, this really kind of puts it all together, like, these are the things that have been done, these are the budget decisions, these kind of drive our budget decisions, and here are the results. And obviously, Dr. J. La Cruz, to your point, there's more work to do, but I hope we can kind of continue to come back to this slide, add to this slide, update it. But for me, this really was a great summary of, of the 95 slides put into one, but also just all the work over the, over the last few years, so thanks very much.
Kitty? Kitty, you might be muted. Beth? Kitty, we're getting more interference from your microphone again. Sorry about that. Beth?
I'm going to jump in because I, I have a feeling, Kitty, you and I are thinking some of the same things. As Dr. J. La Cruz was presenting on this final slide, I snapped a photo of it. What am I going to do with this? I don't know. I'm just really, really, really proud of BVSD and all the work that's happened on this, in, in the time that Nicole and I have been on the board and Kitty's been on the board, and obviously with our newer board members. I'm honored to have been part of the, a very small part of this, but I'm just so proud of you guys, this is incredible. So thank you for sharing that.
Alex?
Yeah, I would echo the kudos and just how excited I am to be on the bandwagon for the, the progress that the district's making. And, and I know I have more nerdy questions, and I can talk offline about specifics, but they're all in the spirit of like, well, are we measuring the thing that will help us make the most difference going forward? Not, we're wrong, or that's not the way we're doing. It's like, well, what's, what's actionable for more people that helps us understand it? And I, I just have to say, the other thing that I think is, Dr. Anderson, his leadership team, everybody in the schools are making a lot of change happen, and it's having the positive results, and it's being intentional. And I, I just want to reinforce one of the things I've seen from observing the district for the 33 years I've lived around here, like the degree of transparency that we now have and the openness to actually have this discussion is one of the things that has changed culturally in the district over the last couple of decades. And that, it's not just that it, that we're willing to let people see what's going on, we're, we're using that information to make positive change, and we're letting people see how we use the information to make positive change. Like, that is just to see change from previous decades in the district. And I know that's a long timeline, but I just want to salute the, the vision of our leadership and our leadership team, working with people and, and getting to a point where, like, the data can help us, helps us figure out where to go, it helps us figure out where to dig deeper, it helps us bring people along who are trying to get to change what they do, and then we figure out how to help them do it. I use we as if I'm doing any of that, which I'm not. I'm just so grateful to see the transparency, and I want to keep us encouraging to have that. It's just great.
Thank you again for all your efforts, not only this presentation, but in making the work happen behind the scenes and in the day-to-day. There are no final board questions.
I think Kitty has her hand raised.
Kitty?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
First, I apologize for all my technological problems, I don't know what's going on, but I did want to, I'll just briefly say how proud I am of the work that's been done, and especially looking back to when I first joined the board in 2017 and the huge progress we have made, not just in our achievement, but also in our systems and, and I want to give a huge shout-out to Dr. Anderson and the staff, because you all have done an excellent job. I have one suggestion for the strategic plan, and that is, next best steps sounds like second-best steps. So I suggest that we put it best next steps so that it's perfectly clear. And this is my last time hearing about the strategic plan, you know, in any depth, so I just wanted to get my two cents in there because, you know, I can't resist.
Thanks, Kitty. Lot has changed in your tenure, that's for sure. Seeing as there are no further questions, board members, we are adjourned for today.